Now seven P M. And I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District two oh four on Monday, March eleventh, twenty twenty four. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
And Ms. Skins.
We have a quorum. Ms. Mr. Rising, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have five board salutes tonight, and we'll start with Ms. Fosdick.
All right. District two oh four students excel in the elementary robotics tournament. The board salutes district two oh four elementary school students and staff who recently participated in the robotics tournament this past weekend. We also salute Director of Innovation and Instructional Leadership, Brian Giovinini, for serving as tournament organizer. Congratulations to all the winners of the school excellence awards, judge awards, teamwork champions, and the skills champions. We extend our congratulations to all participating robotics teams and express our gratitude to the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for their continued support of the district's robotics program.
Ms. Dumbing.
Illinois Business Professionals of America Outstanding Advisor of the Year. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley business teacher, Chris Skrzyszek, who was named the Illinois Business Professionals of America Outstanding Advisor of the Year. The award recognizes educators who have made significant contributions to the Business Professionals of America Association or a career technical education. Congratulations, Chris Skrzyszek.
You have one more, right?
Twenty twenty four Illinois Middle School Principal of the Year. The board salutes Granger Middle School Principal Alan Davenport, who was named the Illinois Middle School Principal of the Year from Horace Mann Illinois Principals Association. The award recognizes middle school principals for their outstanding accomplishments who have demonstrated a positive impact on their students and learning community. Congratulations, Principal Davenport, on this incredible recognition.
Mr. Rising.
District two oh four students appear in the Paramount Theater's Billy Elliot. The board salutes Crone Middle School's sixth grader Nina Polemas and Scullin Middle School eighth grader Willa Zetzenbloom for their ongoing appearances in Paramount Theater's Billy Elliot. Nina and Willa will be performing as ballet girls. Paramount's Billy Elliot will run through the Paramount Theater through March twenty fourth. Congratulations to both Nina and Willa on this notable accomplishment. Break a leg.
Ms. Jane.
Business Professionals of America State and National Qualifiers. The board salutes students from all three district two oh four high schools who were recently named Business Professionals of America National Qualifiers. Matia Valley has four national qualifiers. Niqua Valley has fifty-three, and Wabonzi has thirty-six. In addition, two juniors from Wabonzi Valley Business Professionals of America were elected as state officers for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five term. Sanvi Mangati is the newly elected state president, and Arushi Ranjan was elected vice president of state newsletter. Matia Valley senior Rish Amseraj secured a state championship in the entrepreneurship group, while second place in health leadership group went to junior Laia Mutukumar. And in the network design team, juniors Rooshan Char and Andrew Shu were awarded third place. Good luck at the national conference in April, and congratulations to each of these B P A students and their advisors.
So let's give an applause for all of these wonderful accomplishments. Next up, we have our student representative report by Kaylin McGee from Niqua Valley High School.
Hello, and, sorry. It's gonna take a couple tries to get used to that. Hello, and good evening. I hope you all enjoyed the last few months of winter and are much ready for the warmer weather to come. March and April are busy months for the students at Niqua Valley. This Wednesday, there is the Illinois Science Assessment for juniors, and best of luck to them. During that time, other students will have the opportunity to attend flex blocks. Similar to what happened during the P S A T N M S Q T testing, students can sign up for an extended advisory period to meet with a teacher or two. Niqua is excited to announce the return of its student shadow days. Already halfway through, the administration staff at Niqua have decided to step into the shoes of students. Tomorrow, I have the opportunity to have Ms. Cahill as my shadow, and I am extremely excited, especially when I have to take my trig test. The staff are hoping to gain a better understanding of the mental transition between classes and are trying to implement a softer start to classes for the reset of students. Youth and government returned from Springfield yesterday. Congratulations to Claire Nash on her election for the Secretary of State for the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six school year. And a huge thank you to Ms. Tufo, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Whistler, Ms. Lindsay, Ms. Becher, and Ms. Schutzenhofer for their support and leadership during this. Spring sports are ready to go. Both water polo and boys volleyball have their tournaments starting soon, and we wish them best of luck. March nineteenth is election day, and there will be a synchronous learning day for students. Indian Prairie Scholars will take place on March twentieth. Congratulations to all those students who are being recognized. The S A T and P S A T are set for April and will be continuing the dynamic testing trend. Our spring musical, Guys and Dolls, will be onstage April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh. I hope you all come to watch our talented students. Niqua Honors will follow that, taking place on April thirtieth. Finally, a huge congratulations to our speech team for taking first place at state. A huge congratulations to April Zhang, Avanish Thiyagarajan, and Anurag Gosh for being state champions in their individual categories. That's all for now, and I hope to see you all at one of Niqua's numerous upcoming events. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. It is now time for public comment, and sixty minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by the administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. Tonight, we have two speakers. The first is Christina Garcia.
Hello, my name is Christina Garcia. I'm a longtime resident since two thousand and seven. I have two sons in the district. Albert Einstein is quoted as saying insanity is doing the same thing over and over again. Why is this quote important? Really, it's twofold. My youngest son will be at Fisher next year, and my oldest son is at Wabonzi Valley. I have asked Aurora to implement calming strategies on my block since my son was three years old. They haven't done it. Today, I come here as a larger group of concerned citizens called Aurora Strong Towns together. We are asking the district to help us support our mission to get safer passages for pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists on Ogden and Niola, Montgomery and Ogden, and Long Grove and Ogden. Remember my quote? Each day when I pick up my son from extracurriculars, I see motorists violating the crosswalk signal. I almost see students getting hit by cars. At the last board meeting, the Wabonzi Valley students stood here and said, "Half of the students participate in extracurricular activities, more than half. There are no crossing guards for extracurricular activities." Therefore, I'm asking the board and Dr. Tally, I'm asking you that you stand with us and demand safe passage for our students. So today, I'm asking you that we're meeting on Saturday at the Iola Library at nine A M., and I'm asking some of the board members or Dr. Tally to come before the Wabonzi Craft Fair and show up and listen to our plan to implement just safer strategies so our students can cross. It should be fair for the high school students and the middle school students to be able to go to the Starbucks or be able to go to the Big Apple and have the freedom to do things that normal kids would do, to be able to use their bicycles and cross the street. So please, please, do come to our meeting at nine A M. at the Iola Library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alicia Smith.
Hello, I'm an alumni of the district, Gregory M. Wabonzi. I'm a former teacher at Kendall and Georgetown. I live in the Gomber neighborhoods where my nephews and my nieces attend school. Two oh four states that you are committed to equity. Two oh four does not have equity in busing. The district's policy is that students who live less than one point five miles from their school are not eligible for busing transportation. Yet, in practice, this is not occurring. The district picks and chooses who they grant busing to. There are neighborhoods that are less than one point five miles that the district chooses to bus and other neighborhoods whom they deny busing. In the past year and a half, you have stated that Stonebridge, White Eagle, Eagle Point, and the Gomber Georgetown McCartney neighborhoods have a safe route to school. Those routes consist of walking alongside or crossing Ogden Road, Iola Road, and Montgomery Road. You all insist that walking alongside or crossing Ogden Road, I'm sorry, Ogden Avenue, Iola Road, and Montgomery Road is safe for sixth to twelfth graders. The Georgetown neighborhood has to cross the busiest Walker intersection in the district to attend Wabonzi. Yet neither Georgetown or McCartney's route has been reviewed for safety since they started walking to Wabonzi over thirty years ago. Meanwhile, other high schoolers with a much safer walk are being bused. Many community members have the lived experience of utilizing these walkways as a pedestrian or as a cyclist, and we have told you repeatedly, these routes are not safe. We have mentioned that it will be dark outside when students are utilizing these routes or that they are not cleared of snow. District two oh four should be advocating for the safety of its students with the city of Aurora and with the state. Two oh four has experienced a grief of losing students and a staff member. Within a one point five radiance of Wabonzi Valley High School, there are six district two oh four schools. Six. There is also a community center with a library and gym frequented by students, not to mention area fast food restaurants and stores. It should be clear to motorists when they enter this area that there are pedestrians and cyclists, many of whom are not adults. Two oh four should be advocating for no left turn signals on Iola at the intersection of Ogden and Iola. Two oh four should be advocating for no turn-on right signals for all of the intersections students may utilize on their routes to school. Two oh four should be advocating for sidewalks on the south side of Ogden away from the entrance and exits to gas stations and strip malls. Two oh four should be advocated advocating for a better pedestrian crossing from Fisher to the McDonald's and Starbucks frequented by students. You deny students busing eligibility. Instead, you should be making sure that the routes are as safe as possible. They are not safe with the multiple accidents occurring on these routes. We, as community members and parents, are advocating as individuals, but two oh four is an educational system. You should be using your power as a system to advocate for safety for your students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie community. A lot has happened over this past weekend. On Friday, I P F held its annual gala. This third year of the gala had the largest turnout of people. Though final numbers are not in, the gala brought in more than fifty thousand dollars. Thanks to all of you who were involved in the event. I want to praise Dr. Trudy Ranson, Executive Director of I P F, and Ms. Heidi Holm, Development Coordinator for I P F, and all the I P F board members for their hard work. There were several bidding wars taking place at the event. I was outbid for something for my mother, but Michelle Carter won her bidding war for student art. A fun time was had by all. On Saturday, our second annual mental health symposium was held at Matia. This year's event had more than double the participants than last year, with more students and parents attending. We want to thank West Aurora School District for being a partner in the program. I want to thank all who helped to create this year's program, to include Ms. Dawn Fortner, Ms. Lisa Berry, Ms. Karen Miller, and Ms. Jeanie Dyna, and Mr. K. Nyland. The videos for each of the sessions will eventually be placed on our website, so people can see those sessions. The month of March is Women History Month. This is an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of women in helping to shape our country and the world. Additionally, March is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Signed into law by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-seven, this month brings awareness about the daily obstacles those with disabilities face in achieving full inclusion. This month also celebrates the accomplishments of those who are differently abled and what they have made to our lives. Schools, in their own ways, have been celebrating these events. And on March third, Valley Runway was held due to funding provided by I P F. More than forty-five students were supported in their prom wishes with prom dresses and accessories provided. I'll now turn the meeting back over to Ms. Donahue.
All right. We move to our consent agenda. I need a motion and a second for consent agenda items D through O.
Make a motion for consent agenda items D through O as presented.
One second. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
And Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. We will now have a presentation from Dr. Michael Purcell and Mr. Giovinini regarding the high school course revisions.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Tally. It is our pleasure to represent a lot of administrators and department chairs and teachers who have contributed to what we're going to share with you tonight, which is the kind of culmination of a lot of really good work in some course revisions.
Yes, we are here to provide the updates for a number of courses during the year that we've been working on that will go into implementation next year, which aligns to Board Policy six forty and Strategic Plan Priority Number One. On the screen, you will see all of the courses that we're going to talk through tonight. Some of them have gone through additional resources or extensive processes. We'll give you an update on each one of these as we go through the presentation tonight.
Generally, just to kind of level set and make sure we're all kind of coming at this from the same place, our general process for course updates is that we, our team works in collaboration with building leadership, with department chairs, assistant principals, and teachers from each school to come together to kind of look at the work together. These are prioritized along a five-year plan that we've shared with you, and we'll kind of reference that again here in a moment. These priorities are kind of established along a few things. One, obviously, alignment to state standards and mandates, and we've talked a good deal about that over the past year. Making sure that we're getting schools aligned, right? Some of that, and we've talked also that, you know, especially through the pandemic, those got a little bit looser and kind of in a systemic way, getting those back together. Obviously, looking at student achievement outcomes and alignment to the Board of Education goals, strategic plan, and the equity plan. Just as a reminder, Dr. Lee was here at the end of January talking about the five-year curriculum plan. This is certainly a portion of that. This is kind of us coming from plan to action, right? So he shared with you this slide. I copied and pasted and forgot to cite my source, so I'll do that out loud. But really, this is just what we talked about here, right? So we review what we want to take a look at, look at a needs assessment, design, develop, and then move towards implementation for these things and in places where piloting is appropriate, which is, we won't hear about any of that tonight. Those are typically bigger, you know, kind of system-wide, everybody projects. We would talk about pilots as well. The first two classes Brian and I want to talk to you about are actually just updates on things that we brought to you in the fall, if you recall. The two new classes, and just felt like having an audience with you, just wanted to give you an update on the work because we're really excited about both. The first is a dual credit English twelve class. We're doing that in partnership with College of DuPage. We just had Tim Hennigson here, who's the dean of the English Department, out just a couple weeks ago, working with our teachers, a really good, high collaborative meeting. The class is English eleven oh one, right, a one semester college class, college rhetoric class. This is a transferable class to almost anywhere nationwide, so we're really, really excited about it. Super high demand for this course. The teachers have been doing a great job, and we're really excited to get this off the ground. We think that we'll come back here in the fall and report to you that we've got over five hundred or close to five hundred students that will be earning college credit in English rhetoric and graduating with that as they walk across the stage. Just some timeline on that. We came back, you know, we came to you in October, November, October, and then approval in November. And then we've been working, we've met with them four or five times since then to collaborate on outcomes and working with the College of DuPage. We'll continue that through the end of this school year and over the summer as needed, with the intention of starting that course in August. So we're very, very excited about that. Just wanted to take a moment, no real ask with that, just wanted to give you an update on what that work was.
Our second update is from Senior Inquiry. If you recall from the fall, this was a course in development from our district office as well as our buildings, from building leadership and teachers and department chairs. That is a cross-disciplinary focus that is really disciplinary or inquiry-based. We're giving our students a chance to really dive into a topic of interest that they find interesting, do some research, and really kind of divide into a solution for that project of choice. What this course allows is our teachers have done a really nice job of building a scope and sequence for the course for the six, first six weeks, really kind of going through a guided inquiry process, but building in time for them to really start thinking about what that project or topic might look like and really allowing them to go through that process and reflect. So having that process built in, but also at the same time, going through the whole cycle to kind of see what it looks like in the timing component of all. Our teachers are really excited, have done a really nice job of building out this course and really the coaching that's provided throughout the sequence. They're a really nice job of looking at many design thinking strategies from Stanford, some books, and some resources on the best models that we'd like to use for our students to allow them a really great experience for that semester course. After the, in the fall, the board presentation, they've been working, and then they'll conclude that work this May to begin the course next school year.
Moving in courses we haven't talked to you about in a while, the Advanced Placement Chemistry course is one that we're obviously aligned to the College Board and the A P outcomes. That curriculum team came together to bring those in line with the College Board C E Ds, Course and Exam Descriptions, we'll reference that acronym a lot. And what I got very excited about was really talking about kind of quality instructional practices because a lot of those folks are doing, they're the one or sometimes two teachers at each school. So we get together and have some collaborative time to share some really good things that they're doing in the classroom. And then we came together to review potential resources to support that work as well. And on the right side of the screen there, and the slides you have in front of you, are the units in there that go along with that class and that comes straight from the College Board, right? So we're kind of adopting, not so different from the dual credit class with C O D, adopting a College Board class, and then we just kind of make it our own in minor ways. For that course, the team has come together and, as asked, worked with me, and collaboratively, we are recommending a resource to support that class. The resource is called Chemistry: A Molecular Approach. It is published by Pearson and Savas, and the cost for that is here. What we will look at is both physical and digital resources to go along with that. And the typical, if you don't recall, our typical cycle of that is that we get a six-year digital access, and then that's typically the time when we'll come back for renewal. If we need to extend out a couple of years, then we can do some one-year-to-year renewals. A little bit of that depends with our, and I'll talk a little more about this and not do it again for each of our Advanced Placement classes. Depends on College Board. They don't always give us a lot of notice on when they're going to update these classes. Sometimes we find out, and then it happens kind of the next day. So we got to be a little bit nimble, but what we like to do is to make sure we have resources that can support and be flexible. You know, the resources in the book, we look at the C E Ds or our scope and sequence as what the class is, and then the resources there to support the teachers to help the kids, right? So that is Advanced Placement Chemistry. Moving forward to physics. Again, that course, if you're familiar with it, we haven't talked about this in a while. We actually do, there are four A P physics classes that are offered by the College Board, which is far too many. So it really is left to schools to decide which ones are the right ones. The students that are going into real STEM careers need to focus on these, which are called the A P Physics C classes. There is a one, a two, and two Cs. Don't ask me. So the two C classes are electricity, magnetism, and mechanics. The units in those are laid out on the right side there. The resource, the team that's come together has done this a long time and really, again, kind of came together and shared some really cool instructional things that they're doing. One of the teachers had just been taking a professional learning class that we've been, he and I have been talking about for a while, brought that back and shared that with the team. Just really, some really great professional conversations. Truth is, we start talking about some of these, some academic conversations I just don't understand, but I'm really happy to facilitate, right? So they also did a review of potential resources to support that work and came around a title published by Cengage, which is National Geographic. We had talked about them a little bit last year with biology. Physics for scientists and engineers. And that is, again, the same setup, textbooks and a six-year digital access. The total cost for that would be about sixty-five thousand dollars. Moving forward into social studies, last year, a year ago, we talked about the A P U S Government Class. That is connected, obviously, in some ways to our A P Comparative Politics and Government Class. The way we offer that, this class is typically, students enroll in both of them, and they kind of teach them back-to-back because there's a lot of background knowledge that comes along. So with that, we looked at, again, the Course and Exam Descriptions, ran through a very similar process. The nice part with this group, it was the same teachers that did the U S Government, so we were kind of on the flywheel, right? And came to evaluating resources, kind of had two really great options. They chose one, it was actually by the same author as the title we approved last year. They thought there was, and got some feedback from the kids, that was a really, they thought there was some real value in just kind of understanding how the digital worked and kind of the language and those pieces, kind of the look of the resource itself. That's a lower enrollment class for us compared to some of the others, like the one Brian's going to talk about and the science classes, textbooks and the six-year digital, about thirty-five thousand dollars. Our English department's done a nice job of, in addition to dual credit, we've really been looking at the grade twelve English this year. We have the one semester dual credit class. We also have what we call senior choice classes. That's maybe some internal language. If you recall, the, in ninth and tenth and eleventh grade, you are enrolled in a full-year English class. Your choice is, do you want to take our college prep class or do you want to take our honors or A P class? And as a senior, we open up the coursebook a little bit, and we provide you different options. We have the A P option, which is a full-year option. And then we have now ten, by adding the dual credit, senior choice options where you can, you pick two of them to meet your English credit for that year. Three of them, we did some curriculum work. Truth is, this group had not been together in about ten years. So it was great for them to get on the same page, share some ideas. These were definitely teachers where typically one teacher at each school teaches these classes. So to have some collaborative time to really kind of share ideas, and they've done some really great work. So those three classes are philosophy through literature and composition, world literature and composition, poetry and composition. The work for those three are all, was really kind of based in the same things, right? right? The Illinois Safe Standards for Learning, really starting with the IPSD Cultural Response and Instructional Practices, and I know Dr. Jarre shared with you. And then our Media Literacy Standards, and really kind of understanding, you know, being media literate, understanding message and point of view, and be able to kind of look at it from lots of different perspectives. The Philosophy class has these three units, Philosophy, Metaphysics and Epistemology, Human Nature, Morality and Ethics. Our World Literature class, again, these are semester classes, so just three units, Understanding Self as a Cultural Being, Class of Cultures and Cultural Emerge, Culture Expression, a Voice. We are asking for this class to adopt a new cornovalle. The cornovalle is called Deaf Republic by Eli Kaminsky. It is a, an anthology poem, really talking, it is, deaf is a metaphor in this book, right? So, it really is, if you're kind of, kind of hear no evil, see no evil, and, and the metaphor that kind of goes along with that, it's a, it's a very powerful book, and it's very senior-appropriate, and the team is very excited to bring that on. The Poetry class really gets from kind of understanding poetry to creating poetry, right? So, narrative voice, supportive vocabulary analysis, and then the creative writing part of building and developing and presenting. The, the only class that is looking for a primary resource is, is the one that I, I brought to you, the other two aren't looking, are, may have some subscriptions, we have to bring, come back and talk about some of those, we will, but right now, they think they're going to use the things that they've already been using and curating.
And then I'll share two updates from our CTE department. The first one is our Advanced Placement, make, a macro and micro. For this course, they are two separate courses, but we do generally use the same resource for both courses. Students will take them back-to-back, first semester macro and then micro, second semester for that course. The why behind, the, why we're reviewing this course is, it's been about 10 years since we've taken a look at the resources aligned to this course. Since that time, the AP has changed some of the skills and big ideas for the course, and our digital resources have slightly shifted, so it's an opportunity for us to really align our instruction, the resources, and that we have that align to the AP exam. As Mike, as Dr. Purcell mentioned earlier, our team has done an amazing job as well, sharing best practices, really talking about course outcomes, and what does that look like from day to day in their instruction. For our course recommendation, we are recommending similar resources that we had. After reviewing other resources out there, we felt that it was best to stay with our same publisher, has a really nice setup for our course, based on feedback from our students and teachers, just updating to the newest edition that align more closely to the new course and AP exam. And then in addition, you'll see the cost is a little bit higher as compared to some of the other courses that I mentioned. We do see a little bit of higher enrollment as compared to some of the other courses for these two courses, and you also see the same resource utilized for both courses. We try our best to be fiscally responsible, making sure that our courses are aligned so that we are maximizing licenses, but based on enrollment from one year to the next, we may have to have additional licenses based on what that looks like in each building. We try our best to minimize that cost. Our second course is Drafting Design. The why behind this one is trying to align this with College of DuPage and dual-credit course offering for our students. This course falls within our Technology and Engineering Department. This course really provides an opportunity into the introduction of architecture. What does that look like from drafting, designing, and then starting to develop, getting into the heavier side of AutoCAD, and 3D modeling, and 3D printing are the really core component of this full-year course. For this course, we're recommending a resource that is not a digital resource, but actually a hardback and class sets for our buildings. The majority of the resources for this course are actually software that are part of other bundles that we use in other courses from Autodesk, so you're going to see a majority of the resources that are aligned to actual software that we have bundled with other courses that we do on a yearly basis. So, that is our updated on drafting design and AP Macro and Micro.
And that, a lot of, a lot going on, and we're super happy to come and celebrate that with you. You know, you know, I would love to answer any questions you have, but our next steps are to come back for approval on both, there's really not new courses in here, right? So, there's, so really just coming back for resource approval at the April 8th meeting, and it's, it's split up on the slides, my apologies, on the typo, at the April 8th meeting. Once we, we know if they are approved or not, we are kind of aligning some professional development opportunities, we'll get those booked, you know, and the intention was to get these to you early enough so we could do some of that, even before the school year let out, right? So, especially with some of these AP classes, we want to make sure we can get, get folks out, maybe after the AP tests in May, right? And give them a day that they can spend with the vendor and do some professional learning together, in order to kind of hit the ground running for the fall. So, with that, we'd love to answer any questions about the work that we've gotten up.
All right, thank you. So, we're happy to have one of our student advisory people here tonight, sitting up at the dais here, and so I'm going to start with Victoria, and see if you have any comments or questions about the changes to curriculum that are proposed.
Yeah, I had one about English. So, I took World Literature for a semester, and we did take excerpts from Deaf Republic, and I think it was a very challenging read compared to a lot of the things that we studied that semester. And I just want to say, I really appreciated that, and how you said it is a senior-level text, because at the time, I took it for a semester, so I was still deciding about college, and I didn't know that I was going to eventually end up going to a liberal arts school where now I am going to be very challenged within reading and writing and analyzing texts, where I thought that was kind of over for me after taking AP3 during my junior year. So, I think it is important that we're still challenged. Like, I know, I think the choice within senior-level classes is to kind of ease off, like you find something that is more fit for you, so you're not as stressed about your senior-level English, but I think it is still good that we're being challenged in that regard, and I think Deaf Republic was a really good option.
Yeah, I'm really excited, thank you for sharing that. We're really excited to bring that to the board to formally, formalize that adoption, that's something we piloted for a couple of years in different places. I agree with you, that one of the things we love about the Senior Choice classes, Victoria probably even said it better than I do, it gives kids a chance to kind of modulate both on interest and maybe kind of like workload, right? Because they've got a lot going on, right? It's a busy time of life, and some kids need to step on the gas, because they need to put a couple more, you know, tokens in the basket, right? So, and, and other kids need to kind of pull back a little bit, or really just kind of find a passion area that they love, you know, that, that poetry or world literature doesn't come up as much in our first three years, and if I have a passion for that, it allows us to pursue that. So, thanks, thank you for that, I'm glad to hear you read that, it was great.
Ms. Fostick?
Thank you. I, I really don't have any questions about the proposal. My only real question is, because I didn't note it in the, in the PowerPoint itself, it was just a comment, why is it that AP Gov, why that sequence has lower enrollment? That surprised me, and I'm just curious why.
Yeah.
Or if you know why.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, it's tough to hypothesize sometimes, it's, we get a lot of positive feedback from kids that take it.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a senior AP elective, so it, you know, it kind of narrows the pool a little bit. So, it's, it, it a little bit of, there's a little bit of mystery in some of those sometimes, I think it just, they kind of ebb and flow sometimes, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Dumbing?
Thank you. Have a couple of questions. The English 1101, did you say that that's a, it's a, the students take it for a full year? Is that a one semester college credit, though, or the full-year college?
So, they'll, is a one semester college class that our kids will take in a semester. So, so if, so a senior next year, if they want to take the dual, they could take a dual credit class, and then take also one of the choice, Senior Choice classes as well.
Okay. So, we, we'll offer the one semester, okay.
Yeah, one semester and one semester. There's a couple of different ways to do it, it's a great question, because some of our dual-credit classes, we do a semester over a year to give kids more time. Even with talking with COD, they're like, no, you can do it in a semester, and it would work, gives us an opportunity to grow later on if we want to, and do two semesters of this, we want to, we want to get this one right, and then we'll see if we can kind of take another step forward.
Okay, thank you, I just, and I'm, I know we talked about the senior inquiry last time for the presentation, can you remind me, where does this fit in? Is this under the English side of the house as well, or?
This is elective course for students, so it doesn't necessarily fulfill graduation requirement, it's elective-based, cross-disciplinary focus that students can take as one of their elective base courses for graduation.
Thank you. And you mentioned that we're doing, we're offering AP Physics C. You mentioned the one and two. Who is that, we're not offering the one and two, who is that designed for? If you know.
They are, yeah, they're, try to have good word choice. They, they are significantly less challenging, right? So, it, it is, it lines up a little bit closer to actually like our honors physics class. But by all, but there's a little bit of, like, we don't need our kids, there, there's no benefit to kids to do, to take both one and two, and then the C ones. So, you know, kids that are going down that pathway, this is a better choice, and we've got, and we've got a, it's meeting the needs of a lot of kids.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Two other things. Can you remind me, when we said the resources for the teachers are, we anticipate are going to be available for them?
So, I'm going to wait for you to say yes, and then we will make them available to them. So, they have sample copies now, right? So, they, so they've already seen them, and they've, you know, obviously, they, they made their recommendations, and, and they leave behind some copies, but we're not ordering anymore until, you know, obviously, you know, we come to you guys, and then we'll do some professional learning along with that as well. So, they have digital demo access already, they have, they have kind of, called desk copies, right? They've gotten through the demo, you know, demo and sales process, but we haven't purchased any.
Okay. And then my last, my last thing, I've kind of chatted about dual-credit for a while, so please, we're making some progress, but just wondered where we stood with College of DuPage, seems to be coming along a little bit, but they've been slower than some other community colleges in working with high school districts on dual-credit. And so, there is the possibility, if community colleges don't want to work with schools in certain areas for dual-credit, that the potential, it's, I think it's going to go in front of the legislature, that there'll be the potential for us to, or schools to look at working with other higher education institutions. So, let's say if that, that path, are we, are we beginning to, I guess, two questions? Does DuPage seem to be willing to expand the opportunities? And if not, are we already looking at potential other locations, if, if not, that we would try to work with?
Yes, so, it's a, it's a, it's a three, it's a three-dimensional problem, yeah.
I know I asked a couple of questions there.
A three-dimensional problem, right? So, one is, Dr. Hall and I are going to be with, at College of DuPage on Friday, advocating for some of the things that you talked about, Dr. Howard and I. It's.
She's right over here.
You're hiding over there. I've been actually working with, on that legislation, she and I have been, on the emails that have been working on kind of getting those to, to advocacy. So, we're working on those two dimensions. The other, the other part is teacher credentialing, right? So, so we, so it's a three-dimensional thing, right? So, getting the legislation right, right? Getting the relationship right with COD, because that's our preferred partner, right? It's here, our kid, our kids go there, right? There's a lot of advantages if we can make that work, right? And then it's the teacher credentialing part, right? So, we have a lot of conversations about kind of the basket of college credit, right? So, we, we talked to you about four or five different AP classes tonight, we, so we, we also try to make those more accessible to kids, so that, you know, you know, predominance of those students are earning college credit, and that, that has been our track record over time. We want to look at places where we can fill in spaces where AP doesn't work for our kids, and the English, like, English rhetoric is one of those. So, there's, there's a group of kids who are ready for college credit, who are not ready for AP classes, so we, we were able to fill a hole, right? What we want to do is to be as efficient as possible with that, too, because there's, there are some places where we could offer a dual-credit calculus class, for instance, but we offer Calculus III, and Calculus BC, and Calculus AB, and I'm not sure there's a big gap of kids who, who can't access Calculus AB, who could get, who'd be ready to, to get dual-credit, right? So, it's a little bit of strategy on like, where are those pockets where we could be very high leverage in doing that? So, this was, this was the biggest one, we thought. So, we jumped in with both feet, right? So, we've been doing a lot of work, and our experience has been, when you have successes in these areas, they begin to pile up, right? So, we want to, we want to hit a home run here, and we appreciate the board's support in helping us do that. And, and then once we kind of get through this, we think that it'll continue to go by working on the legislative part and the relationship part as well.
Thanks for doing that, that, those continued conversations with COD.
Thank you.
I know that's been a long time for us. Thank you.
Mr. Krubas?
I, you know, I listen to a lot of videos at like one and a half, two-time speed, but I, I was going to put you down at like .5 speed, because you were going a little fast for me there. But I think I got most of it. The, a couple of points. The, I got, I put things in silos when I look at this from a board perspective, and I got a little tripped up on it. And we came in talking about a board policy on curriculum development, but we didn't talk about the board policy on instructional material. And then the, the slide presentation was talking about courses, and it was also talking about instructional material that we were going to be potentially adopting. So, I struggled a little bit with trying to put the presentation in my exact little silos. I think the message was there, and all that came across, you know, well and just fine, but that was one of the areas where I struggled a little bit. So, I don't, don't expect any comment, that's just a comment I'm giving you. It started out talking about, I appreciate the 30,000-foot view aspect of it. You know, you're impacting 11 courses, and so you kept the slide deck to 25 and kept it moving, I appreciate that. I appreciate you didn't have the board discussing and voting on the scope and sequence of each of those, that would have been a longer meeting. So, keeping it at the 30,000-foot for the benefit of the board was much appreciative. Looking at the last slide, where we talk about, well, maybe not just the thank you part, yeah. Page is 24, where we talk about opening it up for public comment. I think I would like to see us consider getting more deliberate in that. So, trying to get more, trying to figure out ways to get more input from parents and students as we do some of these things. They don't have to be involved in all of the front-end aspect of it, but I think if we try to not just opening it for public comment, but seeking public comment, or soliciting public comment, comment on these things, I would like to see a little bit more effort, consideration of it, in getting input from parents and students on these things. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Rising?
So, thank you for the update on the dual-credit and the senior inquiry thing that you presented to us last fall. I will echo somewhat what, what Ms. Dumbing said, is that I look forward to us doing more in dual-credit stuff as much as we can. I know with that comes a lot of challenges, but I've heard from students that went to our schools in the 90s, and there were dozens, if not hundreds, of kids that did dual-credit stuff with COD and other community colleges. And we somehow got away from that in the last 30 years, but I would love if we could do that again, and I'll just say this publicly, is that I, I think community colleges be foolish not to work with us and our students, because it leads to opportunities of those kids going to school at those community colleges, and are in some first and second year, maybe credits before they go on to a larger university. So, I hope the community colleges see the advantages in working with our students. As far as AP courses and the updates and the materials, thank you, I appreciate it. I think it's, I've been part of three updates now on, on AP materials, and, and I really constantly am thankful for our administration for keeping up with the CEDs stuff on that, because that does change frequently, and even the six years does not, it is changing much more frequently than that. So, I know our teachers, our department chairs are always keeping an eye on that stuff, but I appreciate that we always try to be ahead of the curve as much as possible, and we're best aligned as best we can, and things are updated and current, and more than anything, because I hear this from our parents and from our students, is that our rigor in our district far exceeds and prepares students for once they go off to post-secondary institutions, that, because we keep that rigor so high. So, I appreciate that constant lens on making sure, not just the AP courses, but all the courses. Given that we, our students have to have four years of high school English, I do appreciate that we're adding things and, and offering more options, you know, to Victoria's point, where we're offering some different things, and maybe where we're offering some different things, and maybe things students haven't thought about before, but will benefit them as they go off to, to school. So, I really like that. If you could just touch briefly on, really briefly, on the professional development part, because I'm sure the way that works in high school, especially with some of these courses, is much different than it is with replacing ELA curriculum that we're doing at the elementary school level, because a lot of these things, for the most part, at the high school level are just a continuation or an expansion of what they currently were, correct?
Yes, that's, that's pretty, pretty well-stated, Mr. Rising, so maybe even past that, gave them, some of our best professional learning is giving really smart people time to, to be in a room and bounce ideas off each other, right? So, so my, my job in, in that, and Brian's, and when it comes to, you know, CTE area, is to, is to put some materials in front of them that can maybe motivate them, and to inform them a little bit. So, you know, the conversation we started with English is, we'll use that as a great, it's a great example. What we did with them is we laid out, here's the, here's the state standards, right? Here's the, here's the current scope and sequence that we have. Here's the culture-responsive instruction pieces, right, that we want, and, and the equity plan, and, and here is, here are the media literacy standards, and these are some things that we want to make sure are, that are embedded in there, right? So, then, and then it's giving time and space, and then, you know, some guidance and kind of clarifying to get really, really smart and talented people to get aligned, and to kind of move in a direction that, that is, that is inside of that box, right? To really let them innovate inside of that box. And a lot of our best learning and our best outcomes happen when we facilitate it exactly like that.
Okay. And just two final things. So, really like these courses, especially the current ones, the newer ones we're introducing. To me, this all goes back to our portrait of a graduate, as far as critical thinking goes, and creativity. You know, I, I love that we're embedding that in all this stuff, and fostering some of those discussions. I will probably make an appointment to come look at some of the materials. You know, I, I take what Mr. Carubas says to point, is that I think, listen, I trust our educators evaluating these materials, because they're doing that, what's in the best interest that align to the standards for our students, to best help them teach our students, for our students to best succeed. However, I, I think it is also good to, you know, we've always, it's a state law, so we've always made the materials available for 30 days for parents to review, but that never hurts to bring in like, some high school parents and say, hey, this is what we're gonna introduce, and this is why, here's a chance to take a look at this stuff. I'm sure a couple of people from the PTAs at the high school would love to take a look at that stuff, and it just allows them to feel being part of the process, too, you know? So, you know, because I, I, I always did it as a board member, but I know not every parent that might be watching these meetings that, you know, knows that, that that's an option for them. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Jane?
Thank you. Such great work.
Thank you.
I want to go back to school and take one of these courses. I want to revisit the dual credit. Would this be equivalent to three credits at COD?
So, it is three credits at COD, it is three credits most everywhere. This is, so there is, in the state of Illinois, there is what's called the Illinois Articulation Initiative, IAI. And so, that, that course transfers to all state courses, and most all private courses, private schools also onboard. This class is almost universally accepted, which is one of the things that makes it, you know, just very attractive to us. When it comes to anything, when it comes to college courses, we always kind of couch ourselves a little bit. When it comes to either AP or dual credit, there's, nothing happens everywhere, right? But, but this is about as universally accepted as, as you can find.
Okay. Good. That's good to know. I, I will just disclose that I have, being on the other side, I have some hesitation with too many dual credit earnings that students may have. There's just something, and this is just my personal opinion, there's just something important of that college experience and learning English in college that I do think a lot of students need to experience, not maybe everybody, but, and I'm not saying that to change what we're doing, it's just, at times, it's a hesitation in my mind. And so, I really do appreciate us being mindful about how we proceed with dual credit. Like, more is not necessarily better, right? It's that, it's the kind of analysis that you're doing about what, what would be accepted at as many institutions as our students could have, and really fits that bar of the kind of work that is expected, the rigor that's expected at that level. With the senior inquiry course, did we, do we have a sense of maybe how many students might be interested in taking this course? Do we, do we, do we anticipate lots of sections of these being offered, or?
So, we, that's still being finalized right now, so they're, they're working on sectioning and all those kinds of pieces right now. We, a little premature to report, it's, it was not as, we weren't balled over by enrollments as much as we were with the dual credit class, but, but we, we anticipate that it'll run at every school, we think. But we, those, it's not, those things aren't finalized yet, so we, we can certainly put that in a, in an update from Dr. Tally at some point to give you an update on those two classes in terms of, because those are two of our newer things, and how they're, how they look in enrollments and things.
And the teacher-student ratio, at least for the senior inquiry course, would that be different than our other courses?
So, yeah, so it, we have a couple of different options for, we had, we would ideally run it with two teachers and, and 50-ish kids, right?
Okay.
I'm not sure we're gonna get to that many students at each school, so we may have to look at some different creative kind of staffing options, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. So, with the AP Chem, AP Physics, as we're kind of reimagining, or revisiting the curriculum and choosing new sources, do these decisions impact the other Chem or Physics courses in some, in some way, or is that just going to be, and it's gonna be a resource for when that course is revised?
Yes, we do them independently, but each one kind of impacts the others in some ways, right?
Some way, right.
Because we're always looking at the long lens of it, right? So, so we, if you remember, we were here a year ago, talking about biology and honors biology, right, and use that to inform, one of the things I'll be here again in April, when talking about mostly high school, middle school class, but also the AP Biology class. So, obviously, the, the conversations we had with regular biology and honors biology informed the AP Biology conversation, right? But we also want to make sure, we don't want to get tied into a program, right? We want to make sure that what we're putting in front of our, putting in our teachers' hands, and putting in front of our kids is the best thing in a discreet manner also, right? So, there's, there's some places where the continuity of that provides some benefits, but we gotta weigh that with, is it actually better, right? So, so it informs it, but it doesn't drive the decision.
And last question is, I just, I'm learning more about CED, and I can't imagine having to adapt so quickly, but do our resources update with CED changes or demands? Given that it's in a digital format in some ways?
It depends on, it depends on the resource. It depends on how we've purchased it. It depends on if, if it's an actual textbook, you know, obviously, it's not going to, but some, most of the times, we are doing that shift towards more of a digital textbook, digital resource. So, we'll see some shifts in how they align, and the resource, and what that looks like in the actual software, but if it's major shifts, generally not. They're also in the business of trying to sell us updates.
Right.
So, it does vary depending on how big the shift is, and the vendor, and what that looks like specifically for us.
And every time you make a change, like the ones we're proposing tonight, there's, it's, it's a lift for our teachers, right? So, even if we go from version 10 to version 11, it's different, and I gotta kind of rework some things, and I gotta, you know, do more and more, right? So, so when we, when there are new updates available, that's a very collaborative thing. We get in with the teachers and really have some retail conversations, say, is this really what you want? You know, like, is, would it be better for you to do that? Like, you know, many of the vendors will offer that, even as a free, particularly if it's like, year three of a six-year thing, but, but sometimes it's not better. And, and, you know, we very much, you know, lean on the, the idea, and, and the philosophy that the book isn't what's teaching the kids, right? It's that it's our teacher, we have outstanding educators, and they are what's gonna help a kid learn physics, and comparative government, and world literature. What we want to do is to put great resources in their hands to help them do that, and, and some of them are a little more turnkey than others, and that's okay, but nothing, there's not a class out there that all we're doing is teaching page one, then page two, then page 12. That's just not who we are, and it's not who our teachers are. So, it's, even if there's an update, it's very rare that it's so wildly different, that it would be, like, we can't teach this class with that resource, right? So, a great example is that the, the physics CDs actually changed on March 1st. So, so we did a little bit of scrambling over the last couple of weeks, right before we kind of came to kind of say, all right, we're, we're good, like, we kind of done some preliminary, look, and, and they compared the new CDs, which had changed some, but not enough to kind of change kind of what the resource that the team really supported. So, so these do, we had, that one, actually, we didn't even, I had, we usually know when they're coming, this one kind of came out of the blue. So, so they do change pretty quickly sometimes.
Yeah. I was speaking just out of the interest of offering more resources to our, to our teachers, but they, they do such a great job, and.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, that's it.
So, thank you. This is a long list of changes this year. It's quite impressive that we have this many that we've been looking at. I wanted to go to slide 17. I consider myself a lifelong learner, and I thank you for, for your presentation today, because it gave me the opportunity to Google the word epistemology, to see what that was, because as an engineer, this isn't something that I studied or would have liked to study, but I needed to know what it was, so that was interesting. But on the AP Physics, have we pretty much always, like, did they always offer like, a selection of tasks, and we always kind of focused on one part, on one version of it?
I don't want to misquote it. A change to this model, they'd always given a couple of different options. They went to this kind of four-course model, so I think it was 11 years ago, it was before I started here, but not very long before that. So, and typically, the one and two are, are lower level, less transferable than the C classes. Typically, the C classes are also most typically taught the way we teach them, where you do one semester of each, right? You do both of them in the same calendar year. The one and the two, typically, you are written to be done over a full school year. So, the commitment to get through AP Physics 2 is that you're essentially taking, essentially three years of physics in high school, right? So, a regular typically honors physics at some point, and then AP 1, and then AP 2. And we just didn't want to put kids in that spot, if we could get them to a higher level, and our kids do very, very well. They're, they're very well-prepared.
Okay. And I do appreciate all the comments from the board on wanting Ms. Dumbing's point about more dual credit, which we all think is great, but also Ms. Jane's comments about the concerns, we have a high-pressure district on our students, so I want to make sure that we aren't adding pressure by now. Maybe some parents will be like, you need to get all those college credits while you're in school, so it's a balancing act, but a lot of things in life are a balancing act, so I do appreciate that, and thank you for all the work here.
Yeah. Our, our focus over the past few years has really been, you know, with our partnership with equal opportunity schools at one point, right? We've kind of taken that work internal, is to give more, more kids some college credit. It's been less on giving more kids lots of college credit, right? So, opening the doors that many, many, many of our kids that are walking across the stage in May have something in their pocket that they're taking with them to wherever they're going next. And that's been a priority for us, and we really think that this dual-crediting this class meets exactly that need.
I think that's the right philosophy, yeah. So, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will have our presentation from Dr. Christina Cipio regarding Student Services Update. So, Christina, you're joined by Kim Maloney, Lauren Nyland, and Linda Hurwalt. Thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Tally, Board of Education members, staff, students, and community members. Tonight, I'm pleased to give you the annual update on the Student Services Department. It is board, aligns with Board Policy 6120, and in our strategic plan, Priority 1. Okay. Tonight, I am, I am accompanied by Linda Hurwalt, to my right, who is our Health Services Coordinator, Kim Maloney, who is the Principal of STEPS, and Lauren Nyland, who is the Director of Digital Learning. So, tonight, we are to update you on, and the community, on the supports available to students with diverse needs. We have lots of resource-rich references tonight. We're gonna report on the student usage of those supports, as well as the new initiatives that we have to enhance the learning experience of our students, and then identify future goals and next steps. As I do every year, I start with some fast facts. This year, we have 3,069 special education students. At the preschool level, we have 659 students. That was according to our December 1 child count, but our actual enrollment as of the end of February is 711 students. 278 of those students have IEPs, and 365 of those students have English as a second language. There are 50 different languages spoken at the preschool. They screen over 250 students per year, ages three through five, so they continually come in all year long, and there are now 28 classrooms at three sites, here at the CEC, Graham, and Gomberg. We have 104 young adults in our STEPS program, and you'll be hearing more from Kim Maloney later in the presentation about the, the great work that STEPS does. We have 114 students that require a more intensive level of service, and are placed outside of District 204. It should be noted that we're always re-examining those cases to see if those students can return on either a part-time or a full-time basis. They remain District 204 students. This year, we welcome back six students full-time, and four students part-time to our district, and they've done very well. We also serve seven students within our district boundaries that attend a private or parochial school and require services, and the nature of those services is speech language. So, those are within our district boundaries, but may not be residents of our district. The law requires that whoever, whatever private parochial is in our area, that is what, that is who we serve. We receive an allotment under our IDEA grant to serve those students. Our largest eligibility areas are specific learning disability, autism, and other health-impaired, which have been, that's been consistent for several years. As for services to students, speech and social work remain as the related service that have the highest access. Special education students make up 12% of our students in District 204. The state percentage is at 16%, and the national norm is at 15. Our demographics with the highest number of special education students are Asian, white, Hispanic, and African-American. And finally, from 2022 to present, we've trained 906 staff in a new program called Safety Care, that assists us with behavioral strategies in a proactive manner to assist in behavioral regulation. So, we actually shifted from CPI Crisis Prevention Institute to Safety Care. Before getting more into the data, I just thought a little acronym review might be helpful, because special education has a lot of them. BCBA is a board-certified behavior analyst, and we have eight of those in the district. SCL stands for Social Emotional Learning, and we have self-contained programming that focuses on the needs of students who need a more intensive level of social support. DST is actually a two, a two-tiered support team. DST is actually a two-tiered support team. We have our BCBAs under, as the behavior, DST, and then we also have Assistive Technology Specialists that assist with students that need devices and other forms of assistance with communication. We also have RAP Services, and that's short for Wrap-Around Services. We have a Licensed Clinical Social Worker who meets with families in their home or at a neutral place, and assists families with the continuity of care and services that the student may receive here in the district and is successful with, and she carries that on. It is not respite service, it is service-for-parents consulting. And then CNA, Certified Nursing Assistant. This year, because of our shortage in teaching assistants, and for some of our classrooms that require a lot of assistance with daily living needs, such as toileting and feeding and those types of things, we have gone to Certified Nursing Assistance to assist in those classrooms, and it's been very successful. So, similar to last year, but different supports we have, we've moved from three full-time equivalent in the BCBA role to eight. We do have SEL-targeted curriculum. It's a curriculum that for students who are unable to access our Second Step, that's used in the general education, we have Robin and TeachTown. So for students with more cognitive challenges, and also for students with more social-emotional needs. RAP, that I just went through, the Wrap-Around Services. This year, so far to date, we've serviced 25 families, and our RAP provider has provided about 60 hours per month of support. New this year, in addition to the BCBAs, are Behavior Support Assistants. These are teaching assistants that went on and got a higher level of training, and are under the supervision of a BCBA, and they're in primarily our self-contained classrooms. When a BCBA can't be present, a Behavior Support Assistant is there, so they kind of switch off. And then we have seven Certified Nursing Assistants for added classroom support, again, for those classrooms that have students who need more assistance with daily living skills. And then, and we will get more into this as the presentation progresses, but we're very excited about a new initiative, the Class VR Headsets, which is kind of an Oculus for our students, and we have eight sets. Two of those, two at STEPS, one at Wabonzi, one at Matia, and one at Niqua. So each of them will get a, it looks like a piece of luggage, I think. Laura has it, and it has eight sets each. Our enrollment growth is reflected on this slide, and as you can see, we had a decline during the pandemic period, and since then, we're slowly creeping back up. I think our staff have done a wonderful job of supporting students as they've re-entered the school environment, as well as supported our early learners who have had a very different start to their educational experience. But our numbers are, have dipped down, and then slowly rising back up. The next slide represents our racial and ethnic data in special education. Of note is that our Asian population is slightly rising, while our white population is decreasing. Our two largest groups of learners with diverse needs are our students on the autism spectrum, and our students who are in need of speech-language support. Keep in mind that District 204 has a strong reputation for inclusion of students with special needs, and our programming is similar to the districts in that it is a destination for many families. This year, we were fortunate to add to the resources in the way of curriculum for our students on the autism spectrum. At the elementary level, we introduced the STAR curriculum, and at the middle school level, the counterpart system, which is the LINKS curriculum. Our BCBAs have been instrumental in assisting our teachers with the implementation, since much of it is grounded in utilizing behavioral strategies to support learning. And then there is the LINKS. We're optimistic that we can expand the LINKS curriculum to the high school level, as well as STEPS, to support independence across the community and across this learning environment. Now I'll turn it over to Linda Hurtwald to talk about our Health Department. I may not have a lot of play here.
Good evening. Going to start with some fast facts. Total Health Office visits, these numbers were pulled on February the 8th, and 64,890. Broke it down, injuries, a little over 21,000, illnesses, 48,000. The discrepancy in numbers is because when we log into the system, it's an illness, or it's an injury. Illness has a subcategory, things like my batteries in my medical equipment have just died, things that need to be fixed, so that accounts for that. The good news is, students who are returned to the classroom accounts for 32,225 students after receiving care in Health Services. Vision and hearing screening so far, 11,000. Is that better? Is that better? How's that? Thank you. Vision and hearing screening so far, 11,695. We have 1,072 physician orders on file in the district, which has resulted in medication and treatment administration of over 36,000. Case management services for students has risen to 34,662. These are services for students with ongoing health needs. The DuPage Smile Squad has been here and has served 146 students, and 142 of our students have received benefits from the Eyes of Hope gift certificates. Emergency medications. Albuterol was not available during the 22-23 school year. It is now available, and we have had four saves based on the fact we have that in campus. Epinephrine, for students experiencing an anaphylactic reaction, has gone up slightly. Narcan, I'm happy that it is at zero and zero. This is new, we have bleeding control kits, if you're in the buildings. They are in cabinets next to the AED, where our defibrillator is, so two cabinets next to each other. The bleeding control kit contains everything you would need to control a significant bleed. Emergency bags are coming for the classrooms. Ron Wilkie and I sat down earlier in the year and discussed what we thought should be in them. Supplies were obtained, but the big thank you goes to our adult learners in the STEPS program and Principal Kim Maloney, who are assembling these bags for all of our classrooms. Also new this year, we've launched the Rescue Illinois Program, and this program has provided us with supplies for individuals in acute respiratory distress. The supplies were given to us free of charge, albuterol inhalers, we have the holding chambers, the aero chambers, masks, and this week, they started sending me peak-flow meters. So very exciting that we have this equipment for our students. This is a LifeVAC kit, so should a child or an adult be choking, American Heart Association choking procedures would be followed. If that was not meeting with success, this piece of equipment is a portable suction device, and it's approved for those ages three and older. This is a fantastic new partnership we have with the VNA. Faster healthcare to our families who are moving in, who may not be connected with services, have not linked in with a physician or a practice. Child needs a school physical, a sports physical, of course, we want them to participate, immunizations. They have set up special time scheduling for Indian Prairie students, so they are actually blocking out times in weeks just for our students to make sure those who need services are being taken care of. And I want to give special thanks to Jeannie Dinah and Dr. Segarin and his team, who have been so collaborative in helping make this happen. We all wonder where healthcare is going, and it appears to be coming here. We have seven affiliate agreements with universities and their nursing schools. We provide practicum experiences for nursing students in Pediatrics, Community Health, and Graduate Studies, and during the first semester alone, five universities place their students with us. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to transition to some of our, two of our new initiatives that we'd like to describe to you this evening. The first is Blaze Pods, and they're originally designed to train high-level athletes, and they are just what you see on the screen as far as the lighted, a light on a platform, and there provides game-changing platform during physical therapy. Our assistive, our adaptive PE instructors had asked for the purchase, and we did that. I'll give you a demo, a short video, in a minute, but it is to improve reaction time, agility, it tracks performance data, and it also assists with decision-making and problem-solving skills. It's used to enhance and motivate students for their gross motor, and there's over 100 different interactive and measurable activities. So there are LED lights and colors, and they change colors, and they change patterns, and it's being used at all levels by our APE teachers, and multiple stations and over 14 pods are controlled by any device. So what we have here tonight is a, let's see if we can do it, a demonstration by some of our students here. We may have lost the sound. And those are our PE teachers. Okay, apologize for, no sound, but you've got the, you've got the understanding of what it's like, and it's just a wonderful new initiative, and we're glad that we can encourage gross motor this way.
What's that, I'm sorry, those are students at another school, or was that just an example?
No, those are all our students.
Oh, okay.
Okay. No, it's not. Okay, so our next initiative is our Class VR Headsets. And so the purpose of this new initiative and this technology is to assist for students who may not be able to leave the building for medical reasons or otherwise, and even for those who can, just to provide another experience for getting out to a place that they may not be able to travel to. We can do both a Roman Colosseum, as well as the local grocery store. We can tape our own and put it into the headset, or we can use what they have and go to their destinations. So tonight, we do have Laura here for that purpose, to show a quick demo. Would anyone like to put the Oculus on?
Pretty cool.
And trial it? We will see what you're seeing on the screen.
Yeah, we'll give you an example of the teacher dashboard, so you don't have to have it on in order to see it.
If someone had to do it.
You guys could trade off.
I'm going to come to your office and check it out.
Brad Hillman has come by my office ready to take pictures of me.
Susan, don't trip over the table.
Make sure you sit down or something.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Dr. Tally, have you tried this?
You don't have.
Nope.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Are you seeing anything right now? Take this, take, give your left hand. You don't have to use that. You don't have to do anything, so we are just in the beginnings of figuring this out, right? So bear with us, but just to give you a quick, big picture, basically, you can, teachers can make playlists. So I made a very quick playlist tonight, just to take you to a few places. So I'm going to start her at Main Street, and if I click on Class View, it's hard to see probably, but you are seeing what she's seeing. So in theory, if we had eight students on these, a teacher can be viewing exactly where students are. They can also, as the teacher, place each student in different spots, so if it was to be like a collaborative activity. Here is the heart. So now, move around a little bit, just kind of with your own eyes. And you, if you take the mount, take the joystick, you can actually pick apart the pieces of the heart. Zoom in, zoom out. Is it making you, if you get dizzy, it happens. It's okay. Okay, now I'm going to switch it, and we're going to look at a plant cell, and I believe there's numbers on there. I've yet to figure out what those numbers are, but I, my guess is, as a teacher, you could say, find the such-and-such part of a cell, right? And click the number that you believe that is, so a teacher can automatically see that a student's understanding. So you must, you must have just zoomed in.
I did.
And then, there's always fun places to go, like a pumpkin patch. And you can zoom around here, and use that joystick, and you can get really close up if you really see, like, a pumpkin that you like. Yeah, the, the ability with this is endless. And last, don't fall. Lastly, we're going to see the northern lights. So I have a feeling it's still trying to, there it goes. Yeah, yeah. Well, that's your VR experience.
Thank you.
Yeah, we could have fallen.
So we'll be receiving training from the company. They're very popular, so we have to wait for the training, but we've been playing around with them. And so every high school will get one in the Student Services Department, and then STEPS will get a double, a double dose. And now I'd like to turn it over to Kim Maloney, Principal of our, our STEPS program, to talk about the STEPS program.
Good evening, everybody. These things scare me, so I feel like, Linda, I don't know if I'll need it, but we'll see. Um, thank you for having us today, and thank you for inviting STEPS to present. Today's gonna be a little bit different for me. I'm gonna talk about the Division of Rehabilitation Services Grant on behalf of the district. That we work very, very hard in two components of this grant, outcomes and the essential foundational skills. So we will focus on outcomes first.
Foundation skills first.
Okay, can I see slide three? Is that next?
You wanna go to this one?
Yep, there we go.
Okay.
So this is the outcome slide. Indian Prairie School District receives forty-three hundred dollars per outcome, which is based on students. An outcome is reached when students work in a paid job outside of their school day for either two-hundred-and-forty hours and a minimum of sixty workdays, or sixty workdays, and including those hours. So they have to accomplish both feats to count as an outcome for our district. Currently, our grant has a target goal of sixteen outcomes, so sixteen students that meet those two criterias. And the dollar amount for that this year would be sixty-eight thousand dollars, eight-hundred. Our current total for the grant, based on the two components, outcomes and the foundational skills, is one-hundred-and-seventeen thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So that's the outcome component. Now we'll talk about the essential foundational skill component. There are five areas of focus, and we do this in the building, as well as the next couple of slides. I'll shoot other components that we do in the STEPS program all day long. And this is how we accomplish being paid for those instructional teachings that we're providing. So in this component of the grant, it's forty-three hundred dollars for out, an outcome. And it's seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student when all five skills are taught. So we're collecting data all day long from start to finish, making sure that we can checkmark each student so we can get that incentive at the end. And then there's our targeted amount. So the next slide, we broke down, and we're talking about open cases now. And an open case means that there's an active file with the Department of Rehabilitation Services. And an active file means that after the students take their diploma, so if they take their diploma when they graduate high school, or if they stay with us for two, three, four years, once that take, once they take the diploma, DRS will continue to provide employment services once they leave us and they have that diploma. And that helps when they're seeking job services after STEPS. So ways that we look for the essential foundational skills, we do community work training. And I know the last couple of years Christina and I have come up here, and we've talked about all the wonderful work sites that we have. We have thirty-three work sites right now. We added to this year Crafty Bean, which is towards Bolingbrook. And we've added the DuPage Children's Museum, which is fun, which it, we, we've been trying really hard the last six years to get there, and, and we have it. Um, so those are pictures of our students actually working. Izzy is actually working at DuPage Children's Museum, is what I wanted to say. We, we work all day long. So these are students at Home Depot, these are students at Whole Foods, these are students at Walgreens. DuPage Children Museum is represented twice. And you can see that we're not only in an aisle looking at inventory and dates, we're in the freezers, we're in the refrigerators, and we're keeping track of budgeting and things that way. So the essential foundational skills are taught during the community work training, but they're also taught in-house for students that don't go out into the community, or we're trying to work with our OT or PT and Related Services Team on some small skills so they can get out into the community on a work site. Some of the offerings that we do have in-house, we have our reception desk, which Ron Wilkie has come in, and we do Raptor services now. We greet, we have scripts that we, we greet people when they come and enter our suite. And we also are teaching our students how to use the phone to transfer lines and things of that nature. We have a custodial team in-house. We do the district, we do a lot of our schools. We have an Eagle Courier service. We go pick up district shredding, bring it back to us, and we have students that shred in-house, as well as come over to the CEC and shred here. We also do the ice packs for Linda and her nurses staff in all of the buildings. And we have various projects through District 204. Like Linda said, right now, we're working with Ron Wilkie, Linda, and Christina on filling sixteen-hundred emergency bags with the bleeding kits and then the extra accessories from there. In one week, our young people put together seven-hundred of those bags already. We also focus on, focus on the foundational components in our PAYS Lab. A lot of you have come over and seen PAYS Lab in action. Please feel free to come over at any part of the day and check that out. Last year, we had thirty-one students that were getting time in PAYS Lab. This year, we have forty-four students. We also see those essential foundational skills taught in the production lab. We have doubled our numbers in production. Last year, we had thirty-two young adults that were working in production. This year, we have sixty-four. We practice our skills for that seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student when we volunteer. And we volunteer at Hesit House, we volunteer at Wheat and Pads, we volunteer Feed My Starving Children, and we do a Toys for Tots drive each year. You know I'm not leaving the microphone before I get to brag a little bit about our young adults that are in the community. Those beautiful faces that you see up there are all employed, paid jobs, with the help of the grant and DRS. So they have had an open case either in one of our high schools or at STEPS, and they continue to work for those hours and the sixty-day minimum. Christina, could you go back one more slide? The young man in the bottom row, three over, just emailed, he emailed me for sending it out to the staff. He was just promoted at Home Depot from parts out in the parking lot to doing inventory in the back room. So that's a, that's a really big win. And he started practicing these skills at Matia Valley High School when he was there, and continued at STEPS, and it's been a great partnership. I would like to send a shout-out to Organic Life. Organic Life has hired multiple students of STEPS in the past three years, and you will see them working in our middle schools and our high schools. And for the first year, we have our food service program running at STEPS, and it's become a training center to get our students out about there to get that paid job. Thank you. Another slides of more of our alumni. And then our two vocational coordinators at the end, who really are the backbone of that grant in the district. They do so much work with data collection, entry, and running out to those job sites to make sure that, you know, our teaching assistants are teaching the right skills for those IEPs.
So as far as future goals for the Student Services Department, we want to continue to look at new initiatives, especially technology that make learning accessible for those with diverse needs. We want to look at the fidelity of our curricular-based resources. Even though taking data can be somewhat challenging, we need to continue to practice that fidelity. And then, we want to look at additional opportunities to connect with our community as adult learners through volunteering, supported employment training, and competitive job acquisition. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Ms. Jane?
Thank you, there's so much, so much to, to think about, and so much going on. So I really appreciate today's presentation. I appreciate the fast facts. I, you know, within a short amount of time to help us understand what you are dealing with on a day-to-day basis. I know that's hard to do, but I, I found that really helpful for me to just kind of understand the breadth and of tasks that you guys are dealing with. The overview Linda, that you provided was really, again, the, the fast facts and just the amount of students that are being administered medicines. And just, again, I know we have a lot of students, but when I see those numbers, it's just something that we know is happening, but with that information, I really do even more appreciate the work you and all the nursing staff does in all of our buildings. I guess I don't really have any specific questions, just that I found the information illuminating. Kim, once again, I, I really appreciate your explanation of how the grant, what is needed to receive funding and what goes into delivering those outcomes. And again, just, you do such a good job, kind of giving us perspective on what's needed and then showing us what's possible. I mean, just the A to Z summary is just so helpful for, for me, so thank you.
Thank you for saying that. It's a lot of work on behalf of the vocational coordinators, not only at STEPS, but the three high schools as well.
Yes.
And it takes a lot of aligning and collaboration and data collecting at all levels. So all five of those ladies do a great job.
Ms. Fosdick?
Thank you for all this info. There's a lot of it in here, for sure. I have two different questions. The first is for Mrs. Herwald. The Rescue Well Program, is that, are those albuterol, albuterol inhalers, like stock inhalers, like the up and effron that we stock? Or are they for people who already have albuterol prescriptions or fill in the gaps? Or I'm just trying to figure out where those fit into the program.
The inhalers are for anyone who comes in in acute respiratory distress.
Okay.
So it could be a student who has never had a respiratory problem, but perhaps had a respiratory illness going on, and it triggered difficulty breathing. It could be for this student who forgot their inhaler at home. On occasion, that happens. So it is geared toward the emergency situation in a hope that we can rectify the situation and have the student return to class.
Okay. And do we have those in all the buildings now?
They are in all the buildings.
Great, thank you. And then my second question is for Principal Maloney. For what, roughly what percentage of your current STEPS students participate in the Department of Rehabilitation Services program?
We have forty-eight students that are in that program now.
Okay.
At STEPS. And then the high schools combined together have fifteen.
Okay. Am I remembering correctly, one, the day that I was able to come and help out, one of the lessons being taught for the students was about this program for them? And about what their options were?
Correct. We try to provide families and our young adults, because we want them owning their experience and their disability. We try to provide that in classroom settings, as well as the two labs. The ability to speak on behalf of, of what they do, and to be able to go home and speak about it as well in case parents have a different outlook, or they've heard something different. So we try to enable and empower our young adults to go home and talk about what the benefit is. Because once our students do take that diploma, if they have an open case, DRS will continue to provide for them in regard to employment services, and they will support them. And they have two paths once they are with the, with DRS. They can either take college courses that are employment-based. So that way, if they take that pathway, once they leave us, DRS will pay for some of those courses. And if they are using it for job supports, job coaching, DRS will provide them almost the headhunting of getting a position, as well as the job coaching that goes on with it. That's why we train in our facility to get them those skills. So when they do leave us, their options are, are not limited.
Well, not only the training you're providing, but the fact that all of this is also being fully taught to the students so that they understand all of it. Just like any of us, we want to have some agency over our future and know the information and know what we're choosing. I was just lucky that I happened to be there that day and heard that conversation, heard that lesson. But, but thank you for making sure all those pieces are covered, to serve the students best.
And part of those foundational skills too, it's resume building.
Yeah.
It's scripts, it's talking, it's how to answer an employer, which is different than if Linda and I are talking.
Right.
Or you and I are talking, or a student and I are talking.
Mm-hmm.
It's different when they're sitting in front of an employer, or someone that potentially will be hiring them for pay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rising?
So first of all, wonderful presentation. I, I will echo what Ms. Jane said, love the fast facts and so many things that, especially when it came to Linda's department. I, I was blown away. I mean, I didn't even, I knew some of the other stuff, kind of, but Linda's department, I, so good to hear that and, and recognize just what your department does and, and what they do every day for our students. I will personally always be indebted for our district. My, both my kids had IEPs. They started receiving ST, OT, PT at three years old in preschool. My eldest one benefited from those, eventually became an engineer. So, you know, they, they can start out with IEPs, and wonderful things can happen. Dr. CPO, if you could just briefly, kind of, very high-level, explain what wraparound services are? Because in my perception, or my understanding of it, it really, a lot of it that it brings in, and wraparound services have been around since the eighties. But a lot of that, that now is wrapping around the student is kind of from the emotional behavioral standpoint. Isn't it a lot more? Or do you want to just briefly describe what wraparound services?
Um, so we have a outside licensed clinical social worker. So she's an outside consultant. And there is a line in the IEP called Parent Training and Resources. And so she falls under that, so this is a reimbursable service to us. It's what the state recognizes. And then what she does is, if we have parents that are struggling, a lot of times, it's a student who has been newly identified as having their disability, whether that's autism. There's a, a lot of that. And setting up systems and visuals and scheduling for students on the spectrum. And then there also is a, a large social-emotional piece. And so Jennifer comes in, and she does a one-hour observation of the student in the classroom. She has to get parental permission before that happens. And then she meets with the, with the parent in a one-to-one situation, not in the school, not in a classroom, usually at home or, or some neutral place. And they talk about what, what issues they're having in the home and how they could be supported. And then Jennifer sees what's happening in the classroom, what's successful and what's not. And she works with the parents to get those same systems, whatever's working that we have, to give those to the parent. So
It's kind of all wrapped into their IEP or whatever it is.
Yes. And then, and then we amend the IEP to include those hours. They have a, a, a program or a plan, the parent and Jennifer, of what they think it's gonna take to accomplish their goals. And we write that into the IEP, and then if they need additional hours, they get them. But usually, she's able to wrap it up and, and, and move on to the next case. Because as you saw, that there's, there's lots of families to serve.
Great idea with the CNAs and replace the TEs, brilliant. I hope we kind of keep that a secret, 'cause I think it's, it's a way, incredible, out-of-the-box way of thinking. Slide twenty-one, the VNA services, just briefly. Looked like majority of those things that were all that had to have parent permission, right? I mean, it was either physicals or immunizations. I mean, things that we're providing with the VNA services for families that either may not have the means, but that's all parent-approved, obviously, 'cause they're minors, correct? I'm just clarifying.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, last thing, Kim. You know, what you and your staff are You know, what you and your staff are doing over there is just absolutely amazing. If I talk about it too long, I'll get emotional. You know, what you're doing to prepare those young adults is absolutely incredible. We talk about our mission of our district to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. And I think often, too oftentimes, we think academics. But what we're doing at the STEPS program to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential gives it a whole new meaning. So, thanks.
Mr. Carubus?
Slide ten. I just commenting on the increase in autism. Um, I knew it was increasing in the area and, but to see this over fifteen percent increase in autism over a three-year period is remarkable. Um, so the fact that, uh, um, you know, we are providing these supports to, to address the, the needs of our community is, is incredible because you, you are dealing with, um, the changing needs. And, uh, that's statistically significant in having to deal with, um, you know, however the student presents. And so that, uh, that's remarkable. Uh, slide fifteen. Approximately one thousand physician orders on file. Can you tell me a little bit about that? That seems like a lot of orders that we have to follow.
We have a lot of students. Yeah, we do have that many orders. It could be for medication. It could be for treatments. It could be for, um, tube feedings. There is a wide variety of what those orders entail. And they are student-specific on what the student needs to maintain their health throughout the school day.
Perfect. Thanks. And then, Kim, can you tell me about the, uh, the Grow Your Own Food Service Worker Program that we have?
Sure. So this year, working side-by-side with Jill Gashin and Ron Johnson, we've implemented the lunch program. We've always had a breakfast program. This year, we have a lunch program. And each morning, when they bring our breakfast over, they also bring warm carts in, or they bring vegetables in, or they bring fruit. And our students are practicing knife skills, and they're practicing separating, and they're practicing, um, putting gluten-free meals over at a different side. And what does it mean to have a gluten-free meal? And why do students have a gluten-free meal versus what we are scooping out and handing off? So it's optional. Our students do go shopping during the week, buy their own food, store it in one of our refrigerators or the, uh, the freezer. Um, they have the option of bringing food from home, and now they have the option of having the school provided breakfast and lunch. And we train our students. We were training six students right now who potentially want to work for Organic Life. Some will, some will not. But we're practicing on how to talk about food, how to food prep. We also, our students, we have them do the same, um, training videos and the train, same training skills they have to do to get that food service, um, certificate. So they're going through our program, and now they can work at restaurants. They could, it just opens up again more opportunities. And we are very fortunate to have that in-house and have six kids on our first year doing it in training, which helps towards the grant. And then it helps towards working towards those hours also if they're in that outcome category.
That's awesome. Thank you much.
It's pretty phenomenal. Ron, again, I'm, I'm going to thank Ron and I'm going to thank Jill Gashin. And we have our own person who comes in now and, and trains from Organic Life.
But we can make it part of our bid requirements as well, saying, if you want to do business with us. But that's another conversation, yes.
Ms. Dumbing?
Thanks, Board Member Rising and Carubus for asking a few questions that I had. Um, I appreciate it. Slide seven on the BCBAs and DSTs. Are they going to different, are they going to different schools or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
When we, when I saw eight, I'm just, was assuming that they might be. I was appreciative of the CNAs, as Mr. Rising said. I did have a couple of additional questions on the wraparound. So you mentioned we have one person right now. Are we twenty-five, I mean, sixty hours, that's a lot for just looking at, um, one. And, you know, there've been so many challenges with social-emotional, um, needs. Are, are we able to look at additional or, or is it difficult to find? Or is this the right amount for where we have right now?
I've told Jennifer that when she, she hits, she's underwater or she thinks she's getting there to let us know, and that we would look at other resources. One of the thing, nice things is that she is an outside person. So when parents are having that conversation, which are sometimes delicate conversations about how things are going at home, they're not having it with a District Two-O-For employee where they feel like all their business mi- might be, you know, out there. And so they feel like this is like one level removed. So I think we would rather have somebody who is from the outside. Now, obviously, if she hears anything that she thinks is, you know, endangering, she would, she's a mandated reporter. But right now, she has said that she can handle that, and when she, when she raises her hand and says she needs help, we will, we will get, you know, we'll get another resource.
Um, I had some question additional, but you, you really answered those around, um, wraparound. Let's see, slide... Oh, that got answered by Mr., asked by Mr. Carubus. Mr. Carubus. Just running through my questions, but he had, he asked, he asked a lot of them, he and Mr. Rising. Just a second. Thirty-two. They asked those as well. The last thing, then, they took care of a lot of other questions I had. Um, Kim, just again, fantastic. Love having a chance to come over and visit and see the students. I love how you talked about the life skills, um, that are so critical. Interviewing, communication, um, resume writing. I mean, it's so wonderful for, to be helping fortify our students all across the board with skills that all of, all of us need, but that we're really fortifying, um, our students all across the board. And so it's so critical and how, um, just how inspiring to know that our students, regardless of where, you know, what level and what path that they're on, you're helping them to understand that they're needed and that they can have the ability to have those same conversations and walk through that same work path, that, uh, employment path that everybody needs to walk through. So, um, kudos and, and great job.
I will relay that message to staff tomorrow morning. I'm sure they're all watching though.
Could you go to slide four again? I just have a question on the bottom line, private and parochial. Can you tell me again how that, that? So that's a student that goes to a private or parochial school that needs services that are not offered by that school that we can provide for, for them?
Correct. So, um, under the IDEA grant, we get, um, a, a slice of money, not very much, called proportionate share dollars. And it's based on actually the number of students year after year that are, and, and it can get a little complex. They're in our, the, the private schools have to be in Two-O-For boundaries. But those students may be coming from other communities. So they're not necessarily taxpayers' children. But we serve them anyway because they're in our boundary. The, the determining factor is who's in your boundary. So some districts who have a lot of private parochial schools and within their boundaries are serving a lot more. We, we only have seven. Uh, that is an extremely low number. So of those seven students, uh, once a year, we have a meeting with those schools. It's called a timely and meaningful consultation. And we say, what would you like us to provide for your students? What are their, basically, we have so much money to spend, so what is the best use of our resource? And so for this year and for several other years, for the past six, I would say, um, the, the need has been for speech. Because typically, a student with more diverse needs would probably be in the public school system and not in a private parochial school because, because of the resources we do have for special needs. So these are students, uh, that have speech needs, and we provide the speech service to them. And once our proportionate share dollars are spent, that is it. Uh, it is very limited, um, so they may get a consultative model, not a direct service. So it is very, is very much that those, uh, resources from District Two-O-Four students are not spent on the private parochial students. So I don't want there to be any confusion that they're pulling from district resources. They are not. But the, the funds that are allocated must be spent on them. So it's seven.
So is it, it's a part-time, they come over to the school and get something or?
Typically, we, um, send somebody over. Or it could be a consultative model, or it could be als- also a virtual model.
And so how do you, how do they figure out how much funding to give up? Like, do they, I'm, I'm surprised it's as low as it is because I, I guess I hear that some of the private parochial schools don't offer specials, you know, support for students with special needs. And when I saw that line, I thought, oh, that, that's interesting. So it's like there's some little segment that comes to us that enrolls in those types of schools. But I'm surprised it, it didn't become a bigger number.
Yeah, they don't have a lot of needs.
Okay.
Because again, if they had a lot of needs, they would probably be here where we have a wealth of resources for special needs. So in the private schools, they don't. I don't think there's probably that expectation maybe from parents that there's going to be a wealth of special ed supports at a private school. So speech is typically the only thing that we've given, and we give that, and we're, it's, it's, it is a math activity to say, okay, how much is the salary of that person? And according to who we've picked, or is it an outside person, how much of their time? What will that cost? Divide by seven students. What will that be for each of them? Can we group them together? Can we? And, and so it, it becomes a, how are we best using those resources for those students? Because they do need support.
I'm glad that you brought the VR goggles because when I first saw that in the presentation, I was like, how are, how are they using that? But, you know, after getting further into the presentation, I saw, yeah, I mean, there are students that can't go out for various reasons, and I, I could see the value of letting them experience that with the headset. So it's like a very, very nice idea of, of some new way to engage the students in, um, in our, in learning and stuff. Um, I did have the opportunity last week on Monday. I, um, was in Springbrook working with some autistic kids. And then on Friday, I was in self-contained all day as a TA. And I have to say, it is remarkable to see what is offered to our students and the help and loving support that they get from the teachers and staff there. I, you know, some of those children had pretty severe needs on Friday, but yet they would learn routines. They would learn how to communicate in their way of communicating, and, um, it was, uh, truly impressive and something that, as a typical parent in the district, I wouldn't get to see that. So I really thank all of you for all of the programs. As far as the nursing staff too, I think they love the nurses because when I was in there and like somebody pulled like a hangnail and they're like, can I go see the nurse? I go, I, I think we have Band-Aids in here that we can take care of this with. They want to go to see that, that nurse with their problem. So it's like, um, obviously a, a recognized good support for the students and, and things. So, um, and as far as STEPS goes, it's a fantastic program. And, um, it's always, um, full of high energy and positivity when you go there to visit. And, uh, thank you all for everything that you're doing for our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
And Lori, I would just compliment you because I already heard from a couple of staff members that said how excited they were to see a board member that recognized and realized and worked with the special needs kids and was also in the self-contained, that they understood what the staff has to deal with every day. So I just wanted to compliment you because teachers actually have reached out to me and said it was wonderful to see a board member to understand what they have to work with every day. So...
I think they were worried that I didn't know what I signed up for or whatever. But I, my dogs do visit at two, um, self-contained classes every month, you know, two schools every other week. So it's like I am in the schools visiting. But, you know, the dog and, you know, the hour I'm there is nothing like being in the classroom all day with those students and, um, seeing everything that, that goes on to help them. So thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
So, um, we have, um, legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Does anyone, we attended the division meeting this past week and, uh...
Yeah, I reached out to Sarah Miller, you know, from IASB, who's over the, all the government relations. So they did a presentation on March first to the advocacy group. And then they also, she also gave an update, uh, at the division meeting, remember of all the bills that are out there and stuff like that, of which we all know about or hear about or keep track of. But, um, I'm going to get a copy of that presentation, um, and as soon as I do, I'll, I'll make sure I forward it all on to you so, so we can all keep track of those, those bills that are out there as far as education goes. And I don't know if you wanted to...
Um, one of the bill, particular bills that the, um, one of the senators is looking at bringing before the, bringing before, bringing to, to the floor. I, they asked for school board members to provide some input, and, um, it was extremely valuable. Not sure where it stands. It really, it related to executive session and allowing a, this actual high school student to be part of, um, executive session. So there were six different districts that had a chance to share with the, um, particular senator, uh, our thoughts. And we did applaud the senator for asking to hear input and to hear the side, um, from school board members. So, um, we'll see where it stands.
All right. Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.